Thank you for joining us for the 2020 Victorville City Council Candidate Forum sponsored by the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce. I am Marshall Haprock with the Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District and it is my honor to serve this forum as your moderator. This is one of four candidate forums and the candidates were divided into their respective groups using a blind draw system. We'll ask a series of questions for each candidate to answer. This is not a debate and we do not encourage our participants to refute or rebut how their opponent answers the question. Each candidate will have one minute for opening comments. We will then proceed to the question and answer portion. Each candidate has up to 90 seconds to answer each of those questions. We will finish up with closing statements again with one minute for each candidate. Each of you participating in this forum has the ability to unmute yourself when I introduce or call on you to answer. Your time starts when you begin speaking. Please remember to mute yourself when you are finished speaking. If you unmute yourself and attempt to disrupt another candidate's time or disrupt this forum in any other way, we will restrict your ability to unmute yourself. We are recording this forum and will publish it on the Victor Valley Chambers website and social media platforms. Our timekeeper tonight is Mark Crefield, the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce President and CEO. Mark will start the timer when you begin speaking and will hold up a green sign. When you have 15 seconds left during opening remarks, the Q and A portion and closing statement, he will then hold up a yellow sign. He will then hold up a red sign indicating your time has expired. I will then thank you and we will mute your microphone. I would now like to introduce six of the 22 hopefuls who are running for the Victorville City Council election and here with us today. In alphabetical order, Lizette Angulo, Robert Bowen, Gloria Garcia, Leslie Irving, Terrence Stone, and Craig Timcheck. We will now begin with opening comments. The order in which the candidates will speak was also using a blind draw. This will be rotated after each question. We will begin with Robert Bowen. You have one minute.
So I have unmuted myself. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. My name is Robert Bob Bowen and I am running for Victorville City Council. I'm not a politician. I am a former manager of 32 years with the Boeing company and I I want to help Victorville and try to make it a much better and safer place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Irving, you have one minute.
Thank you. Good evening to all the stakeholders and thank you Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce for hosting this candidate's forum. My name is Leslie Irving and I'm a candidate for Victorville City Council. I'm running for city council to grow a greater sense of community, a sense of community that is inclusive and demands accountability. And like you, I'm concerned about our future. I'm concerned about homelessness. I'm concerned about the local economy, more job creation. I'm concerned about public safety. I'm concerned about our seniors, our youth, and the disabled. That is why my top three priorities are a robust public safety program, growing out our local economy with more job creation and addressing homelessness. But to do so, I need your support to move the needle forward. Please, I need your vote. Vote Leslie Irving on November 3rd 2020 for Victorville City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Terrence Stone, you have one minute.
Good evening. My name is Terrence Stone. I'm a resident of the city of Victorville and I am a candidate for Victorville City Council. I'm running for city council because I just want to be part of the process in making this city great. I want to be part of that process and I also want to include the community and bring them to the table as part of the process as being part of the community. Myself, my three areas of focus is public safety, economic development, and I'm a youth advocate. So you, I'm going to see that our youth succeed, grow and prosper and stay and grow in our, in our city as well. Terrence Stone, Victorville City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Gloria Garcia, you have one minute.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gloria Garcia and I'm a lifetime resident of Victorville. And I attended local schools and BBC and graduated Skateran College of Business. I have a business here in Victorville that I opened back in 1975. I have a bookkeeping payroll, income tax, and auditory service. I have worked with the community. My passion has always been public safety. And my main concern is making sure that we continue providing, you know, public safety to our residents because if you don't have public safety technically, you don't have a good quality of life and that is my main concern. And I have been actually with the, with the city for eight
Thank you. Lizette Angulo, you have one minute.
Good evening and thank you Victor Valley Chamber. I've been coming here since 1992 where we first bought our first vacation home. And we loved it so much that we continue to come back. We bought a second home. My parents decided to retire up here and after their passing, I've been managing their houses for years. And I like it so much that I decided to move up here anyway. So we have three invested houses up here and my focus is on economic development, public safety, family and community minded. And I do have a master's degree in business administration. Public safety is top of my list. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Timcheck, you have one minute.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Like everyone else here, I mean, one of the primary concerns is public safety and that's where a lot of my interest is as well. Along with that, one of the primary interests of that I'd like to focus on is improving city communication to constituents, providing a better way to find information about the city, what's going on and improving city services in regards to what's available to residents. So that's those are some of my goals right now and I hope to expand on that later.
Thank you. We will now begin with the questions. Each candidate will have up to 90 seconds to answer your each question. I want to remind you all again to be aware of the timekeeper and please wrap up your answer before we are obligated to mute you. Question number one. Serving as a council member, you are responsible for helping lead a multimillion dollar municipal corporation. What skills, experience, and education do you have that suggests Victorville's residents should trust you with their city? Leslie Irving, you have 90 seconds.
Aside from having a BA in American Studies and a master's in Education Administration and I'm working on a second master's Science and Public Administration. Regardless of my past legal actions, I probably have a lot of experience, maybe even more experience than most of the persons on this panel. I've been in public service or a public servant since the age of 33. I've served on both the school board as the school board president and the community college board. And I led both of those entities out of receivership. I was a key person in serving as a school board member, president and college board member and restoring local governance to the community. So I have experience and based on my experience and my experiences, I think that that's what makes me a person that you can trust or the citizens can trust because experience is what trust is built upon. Thank you.
Thank you. Terrence Stone, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. Myself, I have been running a corporation for the last 19 years budgeting, million dollar budgets over those past 19 years. And we have successfully passed federal, county, state, and city audits. In doing that, the, the experience that I have for just balancing budgets and making sure that, that everyone is paid and, and and that all the bills are paid and plus having a resources as well. As far as my experience, I'm on different, different committees with the county. I serve on the Excelsior School Board as well. So I helped to balance their budget as well too. And working, working with schools and kids as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Gloria Garcia, you have 90 seconds. Gloria, we can't hear you. You're muted.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, of course I have been with the city of Victorville for eight years with the city council, the city council member for eight years. I am six years have been as mayor of the city of Victorville. So technically people already know what experience I have, what I have done for the city. Outside of that, I also have my own business and I do accounting, income tax preparation for, for many businesses throughout the Victor Valley and including San Bernardino. And so I do have an accounting background and I'm used to working with, with accounts that are in the millions of dollars payroll. So I do have quite a bit of experience. I'm not saying I'm the best at everything, but I do have experience. And I believe that I had been very successful in helping our city with our budgets and and just seeing that we maintain our budget and we have done that. We have managed to balance the budget ever since I was elected back in 2012. At that time, things didn't look very good. We were on the brink of bankruptcy back in 2012. However, we turned that around and we do have a balanced budget ever since. And I'm very grateful to be a part of a
Thank you. Lizette Angulo, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. I do have an associate degree in business management. I also have a bachelor's degree in higher education administration, a master's degree in business administration. I've been a former board of education trustee, also on the personnel commission. And my experience is office manager, executive assistant in the industrial field and compliance coordinator. I've also worked with the CPA and my position was to help with IRS audits. And I do have a business of my own and I also have a nonprofit organization. And I'm sure you've seen me many times around up here in the community, but I do have my nonprofit that we do statewide. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Timcheck, you have 90 seconds.
Hi. So in regards to serving as a council member and being responsible for a multimillion dollar municipal corporation, I, I spend every day, day to day, working in project based environments. While I have never been to college, I don't have a degree, but I have worked in my field since high school. It is what I knew I wanted to do with my life. Contributing in ways to large business that benefit the areas around me, the city, the state, the country. I've done a lot of federal contracting work on large scale projects that covered thousands of, thousands of users at a single time, call centers, data centers, et cetera. So large scale project budgeting, planning, coordinating is up my alley. It's what I do every single day. And with these environments that I work with, you have to be able to not just look at the today, but you have to look at the tomorrow and plan accordingly. So when it comes to working on a project and seeing the long term and how one change now can impact one change later, that's a, that's, that's part of every project I work on. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Bowen, you have 90 seconds.
Ready, go. At any rate, my name is Bob Bowen here. You know, I'm not looking at myself and that confuses me. I I'm absolutely joking here. Working for a multi-billion dollar corporation such as Boeing is not all unlike running a city government. I've worked with every facet of the corporate structure from the mechanics on the factory floor to the VPs in Chicago. My 32 years at Boeing required extensive interface with governments such as China, Qatar, United Arab, United, United Arab Emirates as well as other airline customers, which required extensive diversity training. Not to mention the day to day communications with the FAA, the UAW, human resources and airline customers. I have a two item agenda that I have out there as my platform. And my agenda is simply, is it good for the citizens of Victorville? Is it good for the city of Victorville? And that will be, that will be my basis for any decisions that I have to make while on city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Question two. In May 2020, the Victorville City Council accepted a public safety plan that described how it could expand its public safety levels. That plan also recommended the cost for an expanded level of service and the revenue necessary through measure P. Have you read the public safety plan and do you support measure P? Terrence Stone, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. Yes, I, I didn't read the whole public safety plan, but I'm familiar with it as well. And I do support measure P. I think that we, in measure P, I think that we need to add more law enforcement to our community. It says that we've in 20 years, our population has jumped, I think 96%, but our law enforcement has only increased by 1.6%. And our crime rate has inched up as, as well. So I think that we need more law enforcement on the street, more good law enforcement. Our San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department has been doing a outstanding job so far, so good. And so, but they need the support of, of our city and our citizens to make sure that this city remains and, and is in the future, a great city. Thank you.
Gloria Garcia, you have 90 seconds. Gloria, you're muted.
Okay. Thank you. I believe very strongly that one of the things that we need, of course, is public safety. And I also voted for us to actually bring the public to the, to vote. Measure P. Measure P will allow the city to open fire station 315 that has never been staffed. And an additional 30 police officers, including a crime analyst. And it will enhance public safety, but also improve and maintain public buildings like public library, streets, traffic enforcement, and graffiti abatement and help eliminate homelessness. By, well, we're hoping that measure P will actually pass. And if it does, of course, that will increase our sales tax by 1%. And we estimate that it will bring an estimated 15.95 million that could be utilized for public safety. So I'm really in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Lizette Angulo, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. One of your questions was, have I read the, the plan? Yes, all 92 pages. And I put my little notes on there. Yes, I am in favor of it. And I also see that we do need additional behavioral specialists. So when the officers go out, they could have someone with them to help those that need some kind of assistance. We also need to build a personal relationship with the officers in the community. And we could do pop up barbecues. Well, not right now because of COVID, but there's other things that we can do. We can need to promote and support their youth development. They have programs such as their boxing group. We also need to do bring the community in planning and oversight community committee. I'm sorry. That way we could establish a success indicator to measure the process from progress of strategies to increase trust between law enforcement and the community. I also think that we should reopen the police substation located at the Greyhound station. And that's what I believe in. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Timcheck, you have 90 seconds.
Regarding measure P, first of all, to cover that, I am in favor of that to increase funding for safety, city services. I regarding the safety plan, I think it's extremely important to increase employees across multiple areas of the city. Police, fire, animal control, city services as a whole, et cetera. And the caveats to that are the niceties that would come from it as well in regards to measure P and what it brings to the city, like parks and recreation. Library, keeping libraries maintained and up to date, et cetera. So there, there are things that we can do to take that money and help improve the services and the offerings to the city, like summer programs, increasing the, the technology that we use to provide services to citizens as well, making things easier, information easier to find. So yeah, there's lots we can do and I, I love what the current plan is. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Bowen, you have 90 seconds.
All right. You know, the measure P, the P stands for protection. I thought that was kind of a cute little metaphor there. I do support measure P. In short, we all know it's a 1% sales tax on non-essential items. And what I found from a lot of the people that were out there, they don't, didn't really understand what non-essential items are. Well, let me tell you what essential is. Essential is food, medications, medical equipment. What's non-essential, you know, is beer, cigarettes, you know, expensive clothing, jewelry, that, that is non-essential items. From what I also understand from the 92 pages is that if we don't pass this measure, we're actually out of funds by 2022. Okay. Well, that's a big red flag for me telling me that something's got to be done. But more, more to the point, measure P is good because it is going to put, as we were talking about, 30 more officers on the force over. Now that's over the course of five years. That's not, they're not going to plop down January 1, right? And fire services as well as code enforcement. And I do, I do believe in code enforcement. I had a neighbor on my street that had 56 pigeons, right in his backyard. Well,
Thank you. Leslie Irving, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you very much. With regard to the public safety plan, I have had the opportunity to peruse the document, but I have not had the opportunity to digest it in its entirety. Yes, I do support measure P wholeheartedly. I support public safety. I also support the sales tax because it's consistent with other municipalities and other counties such as Los Angeles County and Orange County. The cost of law enforcement has begun to soar and as Robert pointed out, if we don't find other revenues, the cost of law enforcement will outpace the general fund. So yes, I do support it. I understand that there is a component that encourages community policing and anything to restore the public's trust in law enforcement, I'm all for it. Also components or funds are, you know, can be used to address homelessness. I think that's very important. And lastly, as a separate for fire and law enforcement are necessary because at the end of the day, the public safety means good business or it encourages business. Thank you.
Thank you. Question three. If elected, what policy goals do you have for the city? And how do you envision accomplishing these, those goals if they are in conflict with the policy goals of your colleague council members? Gloria Garcia, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. Well, if reelected, my policy goals are again, you know, public safety, which has been, you know, my passion since I got elected back in 2012. And how I ambition those goals to be accomplished, of course, we're all praying and hoping that we can actually pass measure P because that will determine whether we will have the, the funds to accomplish the goals that we have in mind that we have already stated. As far as improving our roads and maintaining public safety and actually bringing in our estimated, just making public safety more proactive as opposed to currently being largely reactive. I, I don't know whether there is really a conflict with my colleagues. I know we have a council member who is very contradictory. I don't want to spend any time going into that. But my goals are to continue seeing that we improve public safety, our parks, our roads, and bring industry that will provide substantial paying jobs for
Thank you. Lizette Angulo, you have 90 seconds.
Well, my, my focus is on economic development. Public safety, which includes law enforcement and the homelessness, social development, which includes the library, parks and recreation, and affordable housing. At the present moment, I don't see any conflicts that I would have with any of my, my topics, but if there was one to come up, I would think that we would be able to discuss as a, as united together and check if there is a conflict with the state and federal and just discuss it. I mean, and be professional about it. So that would be my only thing that we would need to do is really work together and, and make sure that anything that we do, there is no conflict. So that's where I stand at this. So that's where I stand at this topic.
Thank you. Craig Timcheck, you have ninety seconds.
Some of the policies I'm interested in helping bring to the city have a lot to do with public safety. A lot of the things would, that are my priorities, we're already moving forward with in regards to city safety as previously discussed, which are covered by measure P. But some of the additions to that would be focusing on the homelessness issue as a priority, helping build them up and find a way to improve their life skills so they can contribute to the area as well and not just, not just wonder what's next. Also on top of that, some of the things that I'd like to focus on have to do with, again, the ways the information provides city to everyone here. Make it easier to find the information as to what happened last week or what the plans are going forward long term. Make it easier to pay your water bill. Make it easier to just find out what's going on in your area or what the summer programs are for your kids. As well as expanding those programs and making them more accessible. In regards to, in regards to possible conflict. To summarize, I mean, that's to a degree part of the process. Everything that one person thinks may not be something that everyone else agrees with. So it's about finding a middle ground that works for everyone. Or in that case, working towards a common ground that everyone can agree towards. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Bowen, you have ninety seconds.
Well, policies are policies are policies. But we have, I believe in being objective. I, that the facts count. And a lot of times I don't hear a lot of the facts. I would like to know what the facts are, why we haven't fixed up Old Town. You know, it's, it's, it's part of Route sixty-six. It's got that history. But yet we still haven't, haven't been able to improve on Old Town a little bit, a little bit, but not where it should be. Of course, we have public safety and we have homeless, they are always there. But if there was a disagreement, I'd want to work through it with the other council members. I think a big thing for our council is that they can agree to disagree. Gosh, we're all different. We all have different strengths, different passions. And it's okay to have your position, you know, and then when we get down to it, I'm going to come back to the beginning here and say that let the facts, you know, tell us where we need to go. That's, that's, that's about it what I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Irving, you have ninety seconds.
Thank you very much. A key priority for me would be expanding the local economy. And for me, that would be through job creation. I'm very much interested in creating new job opportunities and retaining the job retention. I would think to do that by targeting particular industries such as manufacturing, systems and technology. Also, other federal agencies and by incentivizing them coming to our community with job creation, tax reductions and even perhaps even entertain, you know, target, target taxes for the, for particular industries. Also, as it relates to how would I work with my colleagues, I think of myself as a collaborative leader, a coalition builder. And I also think that my role as a councilperson would be to engage, educate and empower the citizens. And so with that strategy, engaging, educating and empowering citizens, the voters, I would use that leverage among engaged and informed stakeholders to help me build out coalitions that will help ensure that we are taking care of the business of the citizens, what's good for the city and what's good for our citizenry. Thank you.
Thank you. Terrence Stone, you have ninety seconds.
Thank you. One of my main policy goals is economic development, really big on economic development. And as I look at our city, the city of Victorville, it, it's to me is the land of opportunity. We have all of this space out here. And so the, one of my goals is just to attract business to the city of Victorville. I hear down the pipeline, we have the bullet train coming from Victorville to Las Vegas. We should not let them turn our city into just a parking ride. When they come here, we need to stimulate dollars when they land here and go to Vegas and whatever money that they have left over, they should spend some more before they leave and go back to Los Angeles County or wherever county they come from. That's, that's the goal. And, and as far as getting along with my colleagues, I have to do that. I'm on several committees and it's just finding the common, the common ground, the common goal that, that we're there at the table for. We find that, then we can agree or disagree on just the common goal that, that we're working on at that particular time. And it's just putting together a collective impact model. Let's all move together in the same direction for one cause, and that's to make our city great. Thank you.
Thank you. Question four. What is your plan to deal with the homeless crisis in Victorville? Lizette Angulo, you have ninety seconds.
Well, in twenty eighteen, when I ran the first time, my whole goal at that point was I talked about a homeless liaison, a new position for the city. Well, in twenty nineteen, the city created a new position and it was called the homeless coordinator. Great. On May seventh, twenty nineteen, I met with the city manager and I spoke with him and discussed having a one-stop agency where they could take a shower, they could have a meal, have access to computers, looking for jobs, having a temporary, short-term shelter with thirty days, sixty days or ninety days. And so now the city has adopted some, something very similar to that, which I'm really happy about that. At this point, I'm now thinking about developing a sustain, some, I'm sorry, a sustainable, transitional, tiny home community, a dignity village, if you want to say, where they have their own housing, they could stay there for one to two years. But there is a catch. They have to attend either job training for their education and get back into the workforce. And with that, they could also do their own vegetable garden to give some development of social skills. There's also a rumor that other agencies and cities have been dropping off homeless in our, in our city. We need to invest.
Thank you. Craig Timcheck, you have ninety seconds.
In twenty twenty, it was originally reported that there were about four hundred and thirty-one homeless within the city and we still maintain some of the highest homeless numbers within the county. The, the current city council is actually taking some of the right steps in getting a homeless shelter built off of the fifteen that would provide beds, rehabilitation services, support services in a centralized area that provide not only those but skill sets and starting points to get them back into society and helping and contributing in their own way. It's while we're waiting on grant approval for that, I, I, it's, it's a great step in the right direction. And it's definitely a springboard into not only just taking that and expanding on it in the ways that we can, providing more services, larger bed space, et cetera. But it'll also help alleviate some of the strain on the city. But to take that and provide those skill sets is going to be key to making that happen. And I, I think that we can take that and really grow the effort that we're putting into it to loop them back into helping and contributing in our areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Bowen, you have ninety seconds.
Well, to be quite honest with you, I don't have a plan. If there was an easy solution to this homelessness problem, it wouldn't be a national crisis across most of the cities across our nation. And I do not necessarily agree that just applying for them, I get it. We're applying for money from the state that will pay for the homeless area. But I do not necessarily agree that that's the right direction for the problem. I kind of feel that the question is a little bit incomplete. What do we do with the homeless that are housing resistant and rural resistance? The homeless that do not want to be in the shelters because they don't want to follow the rules. I think that's, those are, that's kind of how I feel. I, I could be way off base. But I don't necessarily think that hanging a sign out there, come to Victorville, we have the best homeless care in the nation is really the right way to go. I do want to help them, but I don't necessarily know that building the facilities like that is exactly the right way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Irving, you have ninety seconds.
Thank you very much. Well, first of all, to deal with the homeless crisis in Victorville, it's going to require time and it's going to require progressive leadership. As councilwoman, I would work to strengthen the and support the homeless task force. I understand that they use the housing model, housing first model in some of the projects. I'd also want to strengthen the intermediary institutions such as churches and nonprofits, those that are skilled with working with people with, you know, in the social service industry, helping to remove regulatory barriers so that these agencies and institutions can help get people the services that they need more timely. Also, to deal with homelessness, I understand where Bob is coming from or Robert's coming from. But a lot of people that we've found that are homeless, they, they've dealt with some kind of trauma, some, some trauma-informed issues. And that takes time to establish trust with agencies, whether it's school, police, healthcare providers, but it requires a three-pronged approach. One is to be, one is prevention, prevention in that we have affordable housing. Additionally, that we have jobs because if you have a place to stay, you don't have a means to sustain your place and take care of yourself. That's a problem. The other issue is what, how do we deal with families?
Thank you. Terrence Stone, you have ninety seconds.
Thank you. In the, the past, we've operated and started a homeless shelter for, for youth. And in my, in my experience in working with homeless over the years, I found that there's tiers of homelessness. And I think that we have all three tiers that I'm going to speak of briefly in the city of Victorville. We have our, our chronic homeless, chronic homelessness. People, that's probably what Mr. Bob was speaking about. They just are going to be homeless no matter what. They, they just don't want to listen. Also, we have our situational, the homeless where people have a situation that's put them into a homeless situation. But then also we have out there our, our mental illness or mental health problems or behavioral health problems with our, with our homeless population as well. And all three of these tiers has to be dealt with differently. So we have to come up with a plan for, for each one of these, these tiers. We also have to utilize our subject matter experts in this field. We have programs that are in the city of Victorville that work directly with homeless and that's their profession. We need to make sure that, that we help them to be the best that they can be at that, at their job. They should not be homeless or going into homelessness, trying to work with the homelessness. We need to find a way to, for the city to try to support their efforts and working with that population. Thank you.
Thank you. Gloria Garcia, you have ninety seconds.
Yes, I understand the homeless population. They have a problem. Trust in issues, addiction, mental issues. And I know that our city council is very concerned about that. We have some things that we're working on to bring a solution to that. The old, what was it called? That motel on Stoddard Wells Road, which is now Desert Haven. I, my understanding is that it's almost completed. And that one has thirty-two, well, come today, thirty-two homeless people. And, and then the other project that we have right now that we have actually authorized staff to apply for a grant for sixteen point eight, point eight million. And that's for the one hundred and sixty-eight bed wellness and recuperative care center that will hopefully be built north of the Ebedale Park on city-owned property. Now, this is something that's really looking into the future. And we're considering, you know, that if we are able to house the homeless into this facilities that we're intending to, to build, well, the one is already in.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your answers. We will conclude today's forum with closing remarks. We will begin with Craig Timcheck. You have one minute.
I first want to say thank you for the time tonight. While I'm not the best public speaker, I, I, some of my strengths come from the fact that I'm able to look at an issue, plan and act accordingly. One of the things that I pride myself in is the fact that I don't stop until I have an answer that might work or that is the next step to getting to where we want to be. So with that, I, I put in a lot of energy and effort into focusing on what needs to be done and where we need to be and how to get there. I'm hoping that I can bring that diligence and that effort to the city to help the people around me and my kids even who grow up here and attend the schools. So I want to make the, the area better, not just for my family, but everyone's. So thank you for the time tonight and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Robert Bowen, you have one minute.
Can you see me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I've, I've lost my camera itself. At any rate, hey, thank you, Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce. Really appreciate you having us on there. Hey, I actually am more relaxed with looking at myself. Go figure. It's great meeting every one of you guys here. This is a campaign. Every one of you that I saw tonight on, on this, on this Zoom, you all seem like very passionate people and want to do the best for our city, as do I. Just wanted to say, you know, thanks for all of you showing up. You know, my name's Bob Bowen. I'm running for Victorville City Council and I'm asking for your trust. I'm asking for your vote and my promise to you is that I won't let you down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Leslie Irving, you have one minute.
Thank you. Again, I want to say thank you to the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce for hosting this very important forum and giving all of my fellow candidates an opportunity to share our vision and ideas about what we can do to make Victorville a place where everybody wants to go live and thrive. I, again, I am very happy to be here and very grateful to have shared my vision for Victorville. I think all of the candidates indeed are excellent. However, I think I am the best candidate and I am certainly hoping that the voters will share my, my opinion of myself. And I hope that they will select me as the choice candidate on November third, twenty twenty. Vote Leslie Irving for Victorville City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Terrence Stone, you have one minute.
First off, thank you to Victorville Chamber of Commerce and for what you do in the community and the business. First off, thank you to Victorville Chamber of Commerce and, and for what you do in the community and the business community as well. Also, thank you, Mayor Garcia, for, for being here and all, and all the candidates as well, too. My name is Terrence Stone. I'm a candidate for Victorville City Council. I feel that I have the experience to be on the city council and help to make this city great. I've been in the community for nineteen years. I'm on several county boards and through the county of San Bernardino with, with the district attorney's office, with the public health department and, and other departments as well with the county, also several cities. I, I've been around mayors and congress and, and and assembly people to help to shape and, and help them to make decisions as well, too, for our state county and cities around the Illinois Empire. So I thank you for your vote in the future and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Gloria Garcia, you have one minute.
Thank you. Yes, I want to thank the Victorville Chamber of Commerce. This is excellent. Thank you so much for putting this together for us. And thank you, everyone else that has participated tonight. I just hope that we will continue improving the quality of life for our residents, not just now, but a better quality of life in the future for your children and generations to come. There are so many good things that are happening within our city, you know, and as we talked tonight, you know, so many things that are in the works at the moment and things that are being completed. So I just want to say that I love my city and I just hope that we continue, whether I'm a part of it through the, or the city council, but, or not, I, I just hope that we continue improving our quality of life. And regardless, either way, I will.
Lizette Angulo, you have one minute.
I would just like to repeat myself in saying thank you so much to Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce for this opportunity for all the candidates. I also want to say that I am family and community-minded. And for, for everyone to look at my website, www.lizetteangulo.com and you'll see my detailed information regarding economic development, public safety, social development, which includes library, parks and recreation, affordable housing, and of course, my public safety, where it has law enforcement and homelessness. Again, thank you so much. Vote Lizette Angulo November third. Good night.
Thank you. On behalf of the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce, I would like to once again thank all of the candidates for their participation in today's candidate forum. This recording will be posted once all of the Victorville City Council candidate forums have been completed. So thank you again, everyone, and please continue to stay safe and healthy.